Toyang magigil, prengasang sila madal. Anang makuso, saking dipoy buhay. Lumang ibirang, duyan panang pagiging. Saman nung lubin, di ka pasisiging. Sadagat ang puno sa simoy, at sa larigong buhan. May tinatampu na, at hawit sa patayang pinabahan. Ang pisang lapat, ang angoy ngayon, ay darating. Ang may tuwing na parang napayanan, ay di mo tinigil. Lumalabas ang labas, ang labas ang sinang. Uyay langit sa tilipon. Ang iningay ang nasa, ay talaga. Sa papaayang, naayon sa'yo.
Fellow councilors, please raise your right hand for the Councilor's Creed. I am a Philippine Councillor mandated by law to enact measures and ordinances that are down to the general welfare of my constituents under pursuits for happiness, peace, and prosperity. I believe in public service above self as the guiding principle of my official act. And as I tread the pathways of local legislations, may the Almighty guide my mind and heart that I shall be true to my constituents and the Filipino people.
Okay, so welcome to the first session of 2025. So, Happy New Year, everyone. So, let's have a roll call, Madam Secretary.
Honorable Arnold Armada, Honorable Carlo Apiado, Honorable Moises Dular, Honorable Ryan Domaran, Honorable Marvin Dalanon, and Honorable Jofr Doran. Mister Presiding Officer, at this moment, there are six members who are present and five members are absent.
So with the six members, a coramist declare. Let's proceed.
So we are now on the approval of the minutes of the previous sessions. We have two minutes to be considered dated December 11 and December 23.
So let's take up first the minutes of our session held on December 11. Good morning, thanks.
Mister Chair.
Honorable Carlo Apiado.
Mister Chair, if there is no correction on our minutes dated December 11, 2024, I move for its adoption.
Okay, so the minutes of our special session held on December 11, 2024 is hereby approved and adopted. So we'll consider another minutes, December 23, 2024.
Mister Chair.
Honorable Ryan Domaran is recognized.
If there is no more correction of the previous minutes, I move for the adoption of the previous minutes dated December 23, 2024.
Okay, so the minutes of our regular session held on December 23, 2024 is hereby approved and adopted. Okay, the presence of Honorable Blake Cartuhano is recognized.
So Your Honor, we are now on the privilege hour.
So, yes, Honorable Marvin Dalanon is recognized.
In view of the... Good morning, everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
And in view of the... The problem last year in the implementation of the ordinance, institutionalizing a minimum of 4% of the annual budget intended for the agricultural infrastructure development of the Municipality of Isulan. This ordinance is numbered... Ordinance number 2023-294 ISB for the... As... Proposed subsidy for the Irrigators Association. I would like to propose to amend this... Uh... Ordinance. Municipal ordinance number 2023-294 ISB. And if ever there is a... Conflict also in 2023, 295, and 296, also be amended. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Uh... Honorable Dalanon, can you give a... A summary, as I say, of the proposed amendment?
If you remember, Chairman, during our last committee hearing on agriculture regarding the... Crop due payments for the Irrigators Association, the 1,250 allocated for the IA in this ordinance uh... Is having a problem on whether we have to give directly to the IA or to be used in other purpose. That's why I propose for amendment because the real purpose and the essence and spirit of this ordinance is to give the financial assistance to the IA directly. Thank you, Mister Chair.
And what is the problem we encountered in the implementation?
During the hearing, our accountant tell us that it is not for subsidy. That's why they make the amount of 2 million allocated for this ordinance as a cash flow work again.
So meaning our amendment is to make it as a subsidy?
Subsidy or the financial assistance directly to the Irrigators Association.
Financial assistance to IAs?
This financial assistance is in lieu of their payment of 500 pesos per hectare per cropping.
Yes, that's why, so that we could achieve atong pinakagol tanga...
Yes, Mister Chair.
...ma-free ang irrigation juice or irrigation piece at 500 per hectare?
Per cropping.
Per cropping. So you are proposing a... Resolution or an ordinance amending the... The said provision, Honorable Dalanon?
Yes, Mister Chair. And if ever there is an... An needed amendment also in 295 and 296, it shall also be tackled because these three ordinance is interrelated. But the real... The first amendment shall be done in... In a chap... In the section in Municipal Ordinance Number 2023-294. I will read the section... Section 7 of the Municipal Ordinance 2023-294. Operation and maintenance expenses. Operation and maintenance expenses shall be prorated to all identified farmer-producer, organization, or cooperatives of the NIA and the Department of Agriculture per service area but not less than 1,250 per hectare. This section shall be the... The heart of the amendment, Mister Chair.
Okay, so if there's no objection, the proposed ordinance raised by Honorable Dalanon be included in the first reading this session? So the presence of Honorable Darly Lama, Honorable General Mihia is recognized. So any other member would like to raise a matter of privilege? Honorable Ryan Domaran is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and good morning to everyone. Happy New Year. Mister Chair, one of our employee in the person of Lenny V. Fabali, our midwife 2, Assistant Non-Communicable Coordinator. She came to this office this morning asking or requesting for a resolution with regards to the attended trainings in Manila. She is the representative from the Isulan, the scholar, scholarship program for hearing aid under the Starkey Foundation. So the scheduled of travel or trainings that was last October 1, 1 to 5, and December 2 to 6 of 2024. This time, Mister Chair, kaygi salut niya atong mga expenses niya. Uh... Previous niya nga ma-travels. And now she is requesting to refund sang iya nga nagasudaw before. And she also mentioned, Mister Chair, that the former our acting mayor is a... Uh... Well knowledgeable with this activity, Mister Chair.
Uh... Honorable Domaran, when you say refund, refund to be charged to existing programs of the... Of the municipalities program?
Yes, Mister Chair. Actually daw last year, do naubusan siya sang pundo. And now, do pwede daw siya pay moan lang na to resolution for reimbursement to be charged to the trust fund. Our local chief executive is also knowledgeable with this, Mister Chair. Siguro daw ang resolution talaga siguro hinahulat para ma-refund siya sang iya nga expenses. Trust fund?
Okay, Honorable Domaran, para maklarota, uh... Okay, so we'll include that in the first reading, no? And then we'll refer the matter to the proper committee para studianta maya. Okay, so any other matter? So if there's none, Madam Sek, let's proceed to the next order of business.
So we're now on the first reading. The first item is the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of the Sanggurang Kabataan of Barangay Kalawag 1.
SK budget, refer this to the Committee on Finance.
Item number 2, the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of the Sanggurang Kabataan of Barangay di Lutilya.
Okay, refer to the Committee on Finance.
Item number 3, still the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of the Sanggurang Kabataan of Barangay Mapanti.
Refer to the Committee on Finance.
Item number 4, the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of the Sanggurang Kabataan of Barangay Kalawag 3.
Refer to the Committee on Finance.
Item number 5, the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of Barangay Sanggurang Kabataan or Barangay Dansuli.
Refer to the Committee on Finance.
Item number 6, the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of Barangay Lagilayan.
Refer to the Committee on Finance.
Item number 7, Resolution Number 395-16 of the Sanggurang Panlalawigan of the Province of Sultan Kudarat. Resolution, um, declaring... For one, Your Honor. Oh, Your Honor. Resolution adopting the resolution of the Committee of the Hall sitting as quasi-judicial body directing the parties in administrative case number 16-23-24 to submit the respective position papers, Your Honor, before the December 27, 2024, before the 16th Sanggurang Panlalawigan of Sultan Kudarat.
Okay, for information.
Then item number 8, we have the proposed ordinance amending certain provisions of Municipal Ordinance Number 2023-294.
Okay, refer that to the Committee on Agriculture.
Then we have item number 9, we have the proposed resolution as regards the, um... Refund of the... The travel expenses of Mr. of Ms. Fabali, Ms. Fabali. Chargeable against the trust fund of the Municipal Office.
Refer this to the Committee on Health. Oh, Finance, okay.
So we have no more items under first reading, Your Honor, but we have just received some communication. Should we tackle this, Your Honor? So first we have here the letter from the Office of the Municipal Mayor addressed to the Honorable Vice Mayor. This is as regards the urgent passing of resolution. First, we have resolution authorizing Municipal Mayor, Honorable Maris Cape, ang sige to sign and enter into a regional memorandum of agreement, or MOA, with the Department of Social Welfare and Development in relation to the implementation of sustainable livelihood program. Then another is resolution authorizing the Municipal Mayor to sign and enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Social Welfare and Development and the LGU in relation to the Tara Basa tutoring program. And item number... And another resolution, request for urgent passing of resolution. This is resolution authorizing the Municipal Mayor to sign and enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Social Welfare and Development in relation to the provision of technical advisory assistance and other related support services.
Okay, so any member who has any idea about this matter? Or, uh... We have the MOA, Your Honor. Okay, shall we call on our MSWDO if she is available to discuss the MOA?
At is our Office of the Mayor.
Uh...
Uh, in the meantime, uh, if there's no objection, the additional items are all scheduled for second reading this session.
Proceed na tamayo, by, your honor.
So, let's proceed.
So, there are no more items under first reading, your honor. We'll proceed now to the committee reports. However, there are no scheduled committee report. So let's proceed now to the calendar of business under second reading. So, we have this letter from the office of the municipal mayor requesting for the urgent passing of three resolutions as mentioned a while ago, your honor.
Okay, so we'll take up the first resolution. What is the first resolution, Madam Sek, that we're going to take up?
So we have the resolution, resolution authorizing the municipal mayor, Honorable Maritesky Palasigi, to sign and enter into a regional memorandum of agreement, or MOA with the Department of Social Welfare and Development in relation to the implementation of sustainable livelihood program.
Sustainable. Okay, can, uh, any member would like to sponsor the resolution? Shall we start with the first part of the MOA, uh, parties, what are the parties involved? So, what are the parties involved?
Your honor, the LGU Isulan and the DSWD Region Twelve.
Region Twelve, okay. And, uh, what is the subject matter? What is the program to be covered by the MOA? And what are the responsibilities of the parties?
Your honor, sustainable development, social welfare, I don't know. Sustainable Livelihood Program, your honor, SIP.
SIP, okay. So... So what is this all about?
So as regards the responsibilities of the two parties, your honor, it is, uh, can be seen on the screen, your honor.
You give me, uh, scroll up.
Allocate or mobilize resources. Mgaan siya, pero ayun nakabutan ang riyan ng one eye.
Provide, uh, arein siya nga daw specific, provide a focal person. Sige, scroll up. Okay, adopt measures. Okay, the medyo generalang man, ang aton nga participation, uh, mobilize resources to support the SLP and to designate a permanent focal person, okay? So, our committee on, uh, social services, is she around? Ah, kulala. Uh, Mr. Chair, Honorable Dolar.
Uh, ining, uh, muha nga ining sa sustainable livelihood program ta. So pinaghiisap Public Employment Service Office sa PISO noh, kagsa DSWD. So, uh, hindi ha din maka apikto, apikto sa aton nga, uh, election ban, kay since, uh, do nabasa ko sa mga social media, uh, even ang akap doo, ginabawal na ka kay simply magamit sa mga politisyan. So, uh, basi, kun maka ano kita sa election ban nga, ano, Mr. Chair. So, eh, this is, uh, kung sa'ko pa ka intindihin siya, do the, ayu dagya po rin siya since sa livelihood program.
Do, ako, the generalang idea ko, uh, generally, projects are not allowed during election period. So, ano ni, sustainable livelihood program from Regional Office Twelve, uh, daw hindi kuman balan ikaw ano kitang mga livelihood programing ilagina implement kung may ongoing or incoming pa ini. That's why the do kinanglanda tayo sa mga resource persons nga maka discuss aton. And, uh, it's a good issue, Honorable Dolar, kung ini balag is a project covered by election ban, no?
And for proper, uh, ano, siguro, Mr. Chair, ya refer sa proper committee lang for further study.
Harry, nari sa ano, last pair as niya.
Okay, so para hindi tama, uh, so that, uh, we will have a uh, a sound decision on this, uh, these three items, uh, though already calendared for second reading, these items are all referred to the committee on social services, okay? So, Honorable Darlene, uh, if you can conduct the necessary committee hearing asap, shall we say within this week, uh, to take up this matter para we can approve or we can resolve this by next session, okay?
So, your honor, um, still on second reading, we have the, uh, issue or the request for a resolution as regards the refund of Miss Fabali.
Okay, so we already refer that to the committee on finance.
I'm sorry, uh. So since we are, we have no more items in our order of business, we'll proceed now to the unassigned business, your honor.
Okay, so any other, uh, any matter, uh, unassigned business, Honorable Lapian?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, as we noticed that every time there's a request to this August body for an urgent passing of a resolution like this, uh, MOA with DSWD, we haven't, we are having hard time discussing because of, uh, the lack of the presence of a resource person to enlighten this August body. Um, since Sangguniang Bayan is a task and, uh, tasked with reviewing and passing a resolution or ordinances that benefit the, uh, general welfare, it is, uh, um, our, my request, Mr. Chair, for us to pass a resolution requiring the presence of a resource person for every request for the urgent passing of resolution, especially with regards a MOA to be entered into by the LGU and other parties, Mr. Chair.
Tama, tama.
Since we wanted to have a, um, to hasten our transaction in the LG in the Sangguniang Bayan, mas maayog it siguro may resource person ta, para since we have this urgent request.
Uh, before, daw gina, uh, check ta naman eh, or daw gina situ ita nga may ready resource person nga magdiscuss, pero especially pahabol lapag itabi siya, so daw wala tan na, ano, no? Okay, so anyway, Madam Eileen is already here. Uh...
SLP, no? SLP MOA, media ka?
Uh... Okay, uh, we'll see kung maka, uh, ano kita, no? We can find a, uh, a solution to this, no? Uh, we're about to take up, Ma'am Eileen, sining tatlo ka resolution all MOA, authorizing the LCE twenty twenty MOA with DSWD. Uh, una, atong sustainable livelihood project. Kailang may question nga nagraise, kung ining mga projects kani, would this violate the election ban? So, kay duwising may maka discuss, makasabat sang pamangkot, ginrefer nalangan na naman sa committee. So ang pamangkot nalangan ay guro namon sa MOA is the urgent ini nga mapasubong or tagaantatay nga ma-discuss mayo.
So, good morning, no, daw ito everyone. So, siguro sir, pwede na to ni siya mapagpaliban ining SLP and, uh, isa, Tara Basa? Aa, kay we will invite resource person from the regional office to explain. Inuwi ining Tara Basa, do nakaten kasi na orientation sa Jansan. Pero mas maayos siguro sir nga mag-invite kita sang resource person get from the region to explain well.
Oo.
Kay may, may kuwan kita sini abi, ang Tara Basa is may school pang-involves ini. May partnership with the school and DSWD.
Okay, do mga elementary students ang target yata sina, o ano.
Sinuang target nila, kay may target na ang DSWD. So, nagwait sila kung when ang ano diri, kay i-explain nila ang program to the body.
Sige.
Uh, and also with the, the SLP, sir.
SLP Tara Basa, may isa pa?
Ang, the other one, sir, ang last, na remember mo to sir, tong naghimukya sang three-year plan, atong sa kagayan di oro, sir. Na may araw na kita resolution, bali baguhon lang sir sa name ni Mayor Palasigi.
Sige, sige.
Oa.
Do iisabay talaga, sir.
Pero sir, kung pwede, mauna lang tong atong sa towers, tong ikatatlo. Atong sa kagayan, balang na resolution, kay may resolution naman to dati, diri?
So isla lang ang, uh...
Oa. Ang name ni mo, abi dito, isla lang nalang sa kay Mayor Palasigi nga name. Oa.
That's why we will be...
Yes, oa.
Okay, sige. Do way matuya discussion, abi.
Oa. So, uh, kuwan na siguro sir, schedule na to na SLP by kung san u sir kay maparami.
Ining a week, kung, uh, ang, uh, mag-set na isang aton nga chairman committee, uh, on social services, Honorable Darlene Lama.
Yes, po.
Okay.
They are willing, sir, to, oh, maka to diri para to explain the program.
Very good, okay. Thank you, Ma'am Lynn. So, uh, on suspended rules, uh, shall we approve the resolution authorizing the honorable mayor to enter into a MOA in connection with, uh, technical assistance? Will you do the honor, Honorable Lapiano? Para matapos ata?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, in a joint sponsorship of members present, I move for a passing of resolution authorizing the municipal mayor, Honorable Maritesky Palasigi, to sign and enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Social Services, the Department of Social Welfare and Development in relation to the provision of technical advisory assistance and other, and other related support services.
Okay, so any secondary? So, there being no objection, they said the resolution is hereby approved, okay? So, thank you, Ma'am Lynn. So, back to unassigned business? Anymore? Honorable Dollar?
I just, ah, good morning, Mr. Chair. I just want to ask if ang business one-stop shop, ta kung sa'yo magumpisa for, ah, para babalaan sa aton katawan, kung ano ba, mag-start na ba?
One-stop shop, no?
Business one-stop shop.
Oo, usually, ano ginasya? First week of January, usually, ah?
Dapat, ah, dapat subong start, start na ba?
Start na, eh?
Hindi ko balan. Bus.
Sige lang, eh, di Monday git subong eh, mas ika-set up.
Next week zero.
Okay, if there are no other matters on unassigned business session, Mr. Chair.